But we're working on transportation. We're working on transportation is used at the moment and we go from Snoqualmie Pass all the way to Ames Lake. About fifty miles. And to service fifty miles of road and get back to the center of that district. It's for quite a challenge transportation wise. And also location of schools, right? A lot of long, narrow strip is really hard to have a lot of options to plan for where schools should go to serve the population. Miss Miller, I'll try to get, I'll send you size ranking of school districts.
Very kind of you. Thank you, Ryan.
Good evening. Appreciate your time. Yeah, it's a tough sell. It's a lot of money. There is something in there for north and we seem to be getting some attention and consideration and that matters to folks here. We do appreciate your being in conversation and what you do. My two sentences along, I'm a member of the community as the district could do a better job of engaging with the community and and considering its assets as public resources rather than absolutely more insular and inward looking toward the district and its interest, but rather as part of a broader community resource in these times that are tight, everything we can do to leverage. I mean, I think the public cares less about ownership and direct responsibility than it does efficient use of public resource to maximize the well being we all experience and benefit from living here. And so I would just encourage you seek out those opportunities and to continue to gauge and present what you do, including the capital programs as investments in our broader community.
You mentioned Opstead would be phase two. What timeframe is?
Well, passing a bond is always tricky and cost of it. The reason for the phase two is as the committee looked at demographic projections, if we were to put North Bend and Opstead in the same phase, you lock yourself into what size of those buildings need to be. And so the committee liked the idea of doing one building in the first phase. It gives you another five or six years. See, and how the other element and density and north and continues to develop gives you another shot at then looking at mograph for projections in five or six years and saying, okay, what is that still serviced by an Opstead or is it need to be serviced by a third element?
Phase two would be a second bond. Five, six years.
And we're thinking we'd be kind of five year increments, you know, it'll take three buildings. We would take five to six years to get completed. So you'd be starting to just have a cycle where you're you're trying to address facility needs the next twenty years.
At that point, how long will the portables have been?
It's a good question. I don't have the dates on the top of my head. Our oldest portables are currently at Falls City Elementary, Snoqualmie Elementary.
Share with you that they've been there at least twenty five years. That's when my children.
So we'd be pushing at least thirty.
We're facing the similar challenges with the physical building, you know, North Bend Elementary was, I think, nineteen fifties or nineteen sixties. And so it's been revised or remodeled and and still at some point you still have the guts that are still quite aged. And so that's, that was one of the things the committee kind of kind of tackle, right? Is, you know, you keep putting into an old building. At some point the system fails and now you're dumping money into a system that really expensive to fix or very disruptive to students learning if you're having to redo an HVAC system on the fly. That was some of the considerations that he kind of tried to work with. What does a remodeled building look like? How many years does that get you versus doing a new building?
That brings up an interesting question. So in Europe, they have buildings that last forever and ever and ever. And so in our country, it seems we just tear down and rebuild. So if you rebuild, you rebuild that it would last longer than your seventy years.
That's the goal. The building standards are quite stringent in King County and we would obviously had to build it as as long lasting as possible because we know that they need to last fifty to seventy years. What are buildings have? And I could just also just make sure there's the clarity for the council. Impact fees would be for this next year for new development. What are the buildings of the future is is kind of aligned with that because it drives this year's impact fees, but is more of a long term issue has its own kind of unique challenges that we'll have to.
Anything else? Any other questions for Mr. Stokes? Appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you for your consideration.
Did want to share with the council in our conversations with the school district. As you did as well in your work study session where we met with the district, we tried to best to convey your thoughts. They around the need for North Bend to be focused on the need for entry capacity here. You have portables. And and let's say again, so that everyone knows we've made it very clear to the district that we do not favor any request for additional portables until at minimum, we've seen a bond issue. They're build new or rebuild North Bend Elementary facility. So I wanted also to be aware of that. And with that, this come through F and A, sir?
C D, sir.
C D. Thank you very much. Ms. Miller?
Okay. Okay. Motion to approve A B twenty two dash one twenty two and ordinance amending the taxes, rates and fee schedule relating to school impact fees as a first and final reading.
Second. Motion by Ms. Miller, second by Mr. Rosen. Ms. Miller, would you like to speak motion?
Well, I'll be brief, but this is a complicated scenario. And going into the future, we we do have to take time to figure out how we're going to approach our schools. We have more people moving in. We've got a great layer of schools in the area and great teaching. We're all wanted. And this is a great area to be in general. So I want to be very careful about our future looks like. But in this case, I think it is what it is. And I hope, you know, we can look in the future and see how the bonds will be received by the out there. Need to take care of North Men and the schools here. Sure.
Sir Rosen, did you have anything, Dan? Yes, thank you. I was just realizing we needed to back up a little bit myself. Yeah. So we have obviously, we 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 introduced the motion, got a second. However, we do need to pause here. Open the public hearing. Take any public testimony and we'll close the public hearing and move back. So deliberation. So with that, nine, seven twenty seven. Open the public hearing. Is there anyone here in the audience at City Hall that wishes to speak on this item? None. Do we have anyone online wishing to speak on the school impact?
We do. Michael Thomas would like to comment.
Thomas, you're gonna mute?
Thank you. Mike Thomas, twelve thirty one La Forest Drive S E. I'll keep my comments brief on the school item. I have some auxiliary comments at the end and would request leave of the council to rearrange agenda. On this item, the the increase is staggering. Going from a single family residence of, you know, from eleven thousand to sixteen thousand and a slightly less increase for residential under twelve hundred square feet. My understanding of school impact fees is it only pays for half of the capital expenditure leaving unfortunately, the rest of the people here to pay for expansion and growth. And it's yet another example of growth not paying for growth. Hey, it's an option not to grow. And it's amazing the amount of unfunded liabilities to take growth that are being passed on to the people that are here. I only shudder to think about the property tax increase and bond increases that are going to be passed on for basically half of this not to be paid for. So I'm gravely concerned about our the reflection in our tax bills coming forward and possible bond measures. I do want to support the mayor in his effort to to prohibit any more portables. I think they're not a good solution. I observed them a lot in Opstead. I noticed they've been problematic, fire alarms several times. So I'm supportive of not not adding any more of those. And again, my concern is really the impact to the people that are here and the large increase. To cut to one of my additional items, I would request leave of the council to rearrange the agenda and allow citizens to have the three minutes at the end of this. Due to that, the Zoom was not working neither online or via telephone. And I would appreciate your leave to rearrange the agenda. This concludes my comment and thank you very much.
Yeah. Do we have anyone else?
Not at this time.
Once, twice. Close this public hearing at seven thirty. Back to council, we have a motion. Ms. Miller, second by Mr. Rosen. Any more conversation? Oration?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think record will show a consistent narrative forth by myself and other colleagues of our displeasure. And concern with the school district continually ignoring North Bend. I don't have my fact sheet in front of me, but something to the order of Snoqualmie. City of Snoqualmie has had all of the recent development, money's pumped into it and continual improvements. Whereas North Bend, and I think Opstead, I don't think it's been touched in fifty years. All of that is out there. It's available information. I will not be supporting this particular motion tonight. Just demonstrate my displeasure. What I hear and thank you, Mr. Stokes, for your continued coming here and dealing with us and our frustrations. What I'm hearing is a lot of maybes, goodbees, potentials. I'm not hearing any sort of this is for sure going to happen, North Bend. This is my second term here and I've been complaining about this since I started. And it's a continuing saga. So I will not be supporting this tonight just to demonstrate to the board that we are serious. These things matter to our community and our community is largely neglected. In fact, when we think about future bond measures and so forth, the only reason why North Bend would be included on that is to get more support for the bond as a whole. I don't see any prioritization in city of North Bend. I'll keep echoing that sentiment. I don't see anything demonstrated by the board that we are actually important or that we matter. In fact, I would go so far as to propose to this council that we will examine our policy on portables more closely and actually strengthen the policy. Perhaps we set term limits. Portables are supposed to be temporary as it says in the code. However, they're twenty five, thirty years in the in the existence here in the city of North Bend. So that will definitely be something that I'll be looking for in council or in future committees. Put that forward. So I will not be supporting tonight's motion just to send a message of commitment for my community and signify that it matters to the city of North Bend. School District pay closer attention to our needs.
Mr. Eldwood? Want anything? Out back? Or anything further? With you, the motion before you is to approve A B twenty two dash one two two. No ordinance amending the taxes, rates and fees schedule relating to school impact fees. It's a first and final reading. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Was opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries four to two with some members Rosen and Elwood being against. We on will now take up item originally item number ten from the consent agenda which was pulled. This is A B twenty two dash one two one. This is a motion authorizing a contract with Terra Property Analytics. Well, see. Mr. Regus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, City Council, page one hundred and three in your packets. Here to talk about water. One of my favorite subjects. In June twenty twenty two, Slough Water Association declared a water moratorium. An unknown end date, their water service area, which includes portions of North City Limits. Slough is indicating that they may have exhausted their available water supply and has run out of our rights to serve additional portions. So that's a concern. Recap back in August, the city made an offer to purchase Slough Water Association without a price. We want to study what that value could be. And so the next step, and this is really a is all we have in front of you is is an appraiser studying. We've used this appraiser in the past. That's a critical path to determine what the value of this association is. This association does have real assets in terms of property. It has three simple property ownerships, including a headquarters building, has multiple easements land and it has some equipment, et cetera. So we don't know what the value is. I'm not an appraiser. We don't have an appraiser on staff. We have liabilities as well. So perhaps their assets or land assets are worth several million dollars, but their loan, their headquarters building or the land may be several million dollars. You've heard the term loan to value in the past. Refinancing or purchasing a home and loan to value could be a hundred percent. It could be eighty percent. It could be two hundred percent. You just don't know. We need to know that information in order to offer them ice, which we would like to do this year. So happy to answer any questions from council and that is my presentation.
And so as usual, we would ask if you have any verifying questions for staff at this time. Otherwise, we'll move comment and then come back. You for.
Just real quick, Regus. Any offer to purchase ultimately how those funds would go directly to the members of Salau? Is that how they're set up? To buy the individual member?
Possible. And we just don't know what that offer is if it's.
No, I understand that, but ultimately it goes to the members.
If it's a friendly purchase and sale agreement, my understanding is yes, if it goes a different direction, maybe a different answer. I've heard from.
This is a not to exceed contract. So do you have any sense of what's going to determine where we fall in terms of the actual
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part.
Not it's a not to exceed?
Yeah, it's not to exceed. And actually, let me correct. One of the citizens comments tonight said it was fifty thousand dollars. It's twenty one thousand dollars not to exceed. In my conversation with the appraiser, he thinks he will be less than that. He one thousand one hundred and twenty dollar. So it will probably be in that fifteen to twenty thousand dollar area. We will determine what the value of Slough Water Association is.
Is it safe to say that the difficulty of the facilities you spoke was going to heavily drive that number? We'll see. Through Elwood.
Just like that. Even more clarify, Mr. Rosen's question. So one possible outcome, I know you the outcomes will be is an appraisal value could come back where the city would want to offer or would offer to purchase Salau that actually could financially benefit every member of Salau. Potential outcome.
That's correct. Just a dollar amount out of the sky. Let's just say it's a million dollars and I have no idea what it is. Possible that million dollars could be spread amongst roughly two thousand members.
Okay.
Hypothetically, if Salau members were to vote to let the city buy them, Mr. Morris said, said does not happen. If it did hypothetically, there'd be a way to ensure that their rates didn't go from Salau rates to city of North Bend rates. So they don't stick.
It's a really great question and I thought about that as well. What like to see is a provision at agreement to that point. There's stair step rate. So North and water customers may be up here and Slough Water customers are here. So it would be unfair to raise those allow customers one year all the way up. That's just just not cool, in my opinion. It's not fair to them. They need to be able to budget for that. So we could stair step that rate over five years, seven years, ten years, whatever that needs to be once those systems are fully consolidated.
Ms. Colón, if I also add on to that, since I did present or that was part of my presentation. Said while we would have to work on what that looked like, we would assure that there would be a period of time to allow members immediate rate increase. And of course, it depends greatly on what we find in the system. And if there is deferred maintenance, it has to address since a utility has to. Part of what I.
I add to that and to add to that, Salau culture is they don't want to use the water when they want to use the water, much they want to use the water. Would you be able to also stair step that in? Yes, I'm about water conservation and membership.
I can't, Mr. Regus, why don't you, why don't you, you can speak to it. I know where the law is.
Yeah. So if it's a consolidated system, city of North and rolls thing, then they would be subject to our water conservation ordinance. Customers inside city limits and outside city limits, anybody that gets their water from city of North and would be subject to water.
I agree with that. And I would remind that allow customers within city limits and within the U G A are already subject to water conservation ordinance. We had many and long discussions with the association at in twenty twenty. Sure, I would.
Let's run the topic of conservation ordinance and I apologize for not give you a heads up on this question. It just occurred to me. How long has our ordinance been in fact?
This is the third year.
And within this three year period that had this conservation ordinance with Salau membership also wanting to follow that ordinance. How many people within the city limits have we had to find or have suffered from our ordinance?
Zero.
Zero. And have you noticed the decline in water usage since we've employed the ordinance?
Yes, we've noticed September and October usage goes down because we pride that like least social media, our website. People generally want to do the right thing. We don't need every single person to conserve water. Some people conserve water more about it. It makes a real difference. Serve so many folk.
In your expert opinions, you think the ordinance working?
Yes.
Other questions for staff?
Miller. Quick question, Mark. And I just got a call as I was driving into this meeting. And this constituent asked a question about pipes underneath the law pipes. In other words, infrastructure. Is there any way that this would appraisal will review any possible leakage?
No, this this study is is being done by an appraiser, not a civil engineer or a leak and specialist. So we won't add information as a result of this contract.
Thank you. I just want to provide the accurate information back.
Other questions? Being none. I will now open to public comment. If you are here in council chambers and would like to speak on this motion, please approach the mic. Start with anyone here in chambers, then move online. And you'll have up to three minutes to speak, starting with your name and address for the record.
Absolutely.
Uh, let's, let's cover a couple of points.
I need to start again.
Marcus Morris at one, two, six, two, nine, one hundred and sixty eighth Avenue, Southeast North Bend, Washington. Salau customer outside of the city limits, member owned entity. Member owned entity. Mr. Regus made some veiled threat to distinction between a voluntary purchase and involuntary purchase. And you said you spoke with some lawyer about that. Like to know what lawyer you spoke with about the involuntary purchase acquisition of Salau. Salau is a member. Oh, he did. He said, he was asked the question of would the funds be distributed? The members, owners of Salau. He said, well, yes, if it's a voluntary purchase, they would be, but perhaps not if it's an involuntary purchase. And as I spoke somebody speaking with a lawyer, you said that it's on the record. So I want to know what lawyer you spoke with and what the distinction would be between that. So
Please address council.
So just to point, it's a member owned organization. Many of us live outside of the city of North Bend, have no connection to North Bend whatsoever. We do not want North Bend running our water, taking our water in any way, shape or form. So you're spending money on an appraisal that is right voluntary to pursue a voluntary takeover is just not going to happen. So I would suggest you spend your money elsewhere. Mr. Eldwood has issues with the school. I agree. We have fiscal constraints. And you, Mr. Mayor, are proposing, we just spend money that we don't have. Your proposal to again, down to the Washington National Guard property that spends eight million dollars. Where are you going to get eight million dollars from, Mr. Mayor? Where? I ask you, council members, where are you going to get that? Where are you going to get the money to purchase Salau? Let's say the appraiser comes back and says it's worth five million dollars. Making up numbers, you're making up numbers. Where are you going to get five million dollars from? This is a bad idea. It's a bad plan. It's ill conceived. You have water issues. You should address water issues on your own. Waters plan should be, you should deal with your own in-house problems around your water supply and your lack thereof and your mitigation requirements under Foster. Leave Salau alone. Don't waste your money. That's what this is.
Who else here? Do we have anyone online?
We do. Michael Thomas would like to comment.
Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mike Thomas, twelve thirty one La Forest Drive S E. And also I wish to thank council for moving this to regular agenda and permitting comments. I really do appreciate that. I'm very concerned about this item. The item really doesn't cover all the items needed to value Salau, which is really needed for a good faith bona fide offer. The city council really needs to know how much it's going to cost to develop this offer. And to date, I don't see indication this has been shared or that this is even complete. If you read the text of the contracts, there are several items appear to be missing from the appraisal or will need valuation. There's more than close to sixty miles of Salau water main. There are four active wells and one inactive well Salau has. Then there's the water right itself. Water, water mains are very expensive. If you followed your previous item last week, A B twenty two dash one eleven. It was three point one million dollars for one point seven miles of mains. I mean, that's three hundred and fifty bucks a linear foot. Salau has more than three hundred thousand feet of main that is not valued by this offer. Of course, you know, the mains are smaller, but certainly, you know, Mr. Regus knows how much it costs to trench and tear up road. So also recently added a very large well, including chlorinating it. And that was, I recall, in the order of several million. And so there are also two large wells in addition. On storage, you know, it looks like the appraisal tries to evaluate it. However, how are engineering aspects considered? It was quite tall and costly, five point two five five million. Is the appraiser qualified to make valuation judgments regarding engineering? Or will more professional services be needed to value the specific nature of the storage being considered for purchase? Became very important. And in real estate, it's location, location, location and storage, it's elevation, elevation, elevation. So all the reservoirs and storage is at a far higher elevation than anything the city currently has. You're going to need more technical analysis, engineering and projects to realize the merging of this, even if it does happen. Do you have an estimate for this? Even the Salau twenty twenty W S P identified several items like storage and booster stations. I'm very concerned about that. You know, you don't really have a complete idea, even after you have evaluation this then what do you, what do you, what do you need to spend to actually realize to put these systems together? And very concerned about questions like no doubt, Mr. Morris said, how do you intend to pay for this? And also I'm getting questions online is, you know, well, folks inside the city that have a chance to vote on this in a general election. No doubt, you know, city water folks may be concerned about their impact and what they'll pay. What about city packs taxpayers? I'd really ask council to really table this and not approve it as written. I don't feel that there's much support for this item, certainly none amongst the law members as myself. And I'm very concerned where this, where this is headed. Thank you very much. And I appreciate your time. This concludes my remarks.
Do we have anyone else on?
No one else.
That, Mr. Lundbeck? That Mr. Lundbeck, did this come through your committee?
No, your honor, it came through the CED.
Came through CED? Don't think so.
No, was this one? Oh, that's right. We pulled this one. That's right.
Yep. Yep. I finally got you.
Yeah, you finally got me. Okay. Three years. Okay. Motion to approve AB 22-121 authorizing the mayor to sign professional services agreement with Terra Property Analytics LLC to form content approved by the city attorney in an amount not to exceed $21,220.
Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Rosen, Mr. Lundbeck, even though you did not know it, would you like to speak to them?
Well, it was a last minute change. This is a, this is a part of a process. Uh, and I think that everybody wants to be as informed as possible going into any potential. And part of that is information. Part of the problem is, of course, that we all realize that certain record keeping and for certain record sharing is not necessarily readily available. So there's going to be some digging involved, not literally, but there's going to be some digging involved. And this is one part of the problem. Uh, we need to be able to make an intelligent decision and to be able to have as many relevant facts in front of us as possible moving forward. So I would recommend to do pass. This is something that we've been dealing with for quite some time. I believe it's, uh, it's time to actually take a serious look at this situation. Thank you.
Mr. Rosen, you were the second.
Um, yeah, I, I wanted to speak to this a little bit tonight. It's a little bit brief. We have to investigate all our options for a second mitigation source. Mr. Thomas, you probably will be happy because you've been asking us to look at a second mitigation source. All these options have substantial costs associated with them, no doubt about it. What the cost of this one will be, we don't know. Us need for an appraisal. But the important thing is, and I wanted to draw attention to this because it seems to be in a bit of a vacuum out there on all the facts. At the end of the day, whatever the amount is determined, that ultimately will be up to the individual members of Salal to vote on. They don't want the offer. You do not have to accept it and we will move on. It is up to the Salal members, not to the council, Salal board. It's the individual members who will ultimately get to vote and feel hence, if don't feel the appraisal is fair and correctly, they can vote that down. It's fine. And I respect that vote. But at the end of the day, I just want folks to really understand that's where the decision will lie, not with us. And how much we would pay the association, obviously we don't know. That's why we need the appraisal so we can make offer to those members. I just wanted to clarify that and get that out. Thank you, your honor. That's all.
That's Rosen. So. Rowan.
Appreciate the testimony. Um, a couple of individuals tonight and in the past. And I appreciate the fact that what I'm hearing consistently is that the membership will not sell, the membership will not do this. Unfortunately, I'm only hearing a handful of people telling me this. I know people that reside within the Salal district. I'm hearing a different tale. Tale that I'm hearing is they don't want their water rates to go up. That's a fixable solution if this partnership ever works out. Also don't know what the offer would be. Could be financially advantageous for members of the Salal to take advantage of this partnership. We just don't know yet. My colleagues have said, there's still some information that we need to eke out. There's information that is not given to us. So we have to figure out another path to whatever that truth may be. Maybe there are also members that want better management. I seem to recall, I seem to recall two or three E. coli breakouts. That's a public health and safety risk as far as I'm concerned. One of the early concerns with this partnership that was constantly touted at the podium is that we don't want chlorine in our water. Now you have to have chlorine in your water because the infrastructure is requiring, because it was a sick thing. That concerns me as, as a city council member. Maybe there's clean self, clean, safe water needs, fixing infrastructure needs. There's a lot of unknowns here. And I'm genuinely concerned about those who live in the Salal water district. So I would like to understand more information because maybe this prices us out. Maybe this can't happen. Until we actually have some of these data to sit back and make an intelligent decision, we have to move forward with some of these, these estimates and appraisals that we need to ascertain. So right now, I'm only hearing from a few people. Sounds like some of these folks live outside of the city of North Bend. But honestly, till we know what we can offer, city can offer, we don't really know what game we're playing with the membership. Thank you.
Oh, yes. Thank you, your honor. My eyes are pretty fresh. And the city does have interests. It has commitments and obligations and uh, legal requirements and so forth. And it's a city. Cities provide infrastructure and that includes drinking water. It's well within the auspices of the city and its council to focus energy, time and resource on providing clean drinking water, folks. It's not news. What I see, this council has worked diligently in that direction through multiple administrations in an effort to engage with Salal. Hasn't gone well. Shoot. There are mutual interests between both parties. Both parties are challenged under the authority of Department of Health and other regulatory agencies to do well and perform well because we all have an interest. Guess what? Clean drinking water. We do not want to be Jackson, Mississippi, you know? And it's just foundational and fundamental for the city to continue to pursue those. I can't speak for Salal. I think as a water association, they have an interest, if not an obligation, in serving their customers as best they can and providing them clean, efficient, safe drinking water without threat. The fact that two parties with mutual interest can't get together and come up with a solution when the resources are available between the two of them to move forward towards a reasonable solution is outrageous. I don't get it. The city can act in its own interest and then its own benefit, you know, towards this end, and it is doing so with this motion to attempt to get good information. All parties benefit from an accurate assessment and valuation of the resources that's well held. There's no threat there. There's no implied threat. There's no, it's, it's the city trying to do what the city needs to do and move forward and solve a, a, a problem that it sees coming and is going to address. It's not going to say, oh, shoot, no more water, no more development, no more taps. We don't care. We're done. That is not an option and it shouldn't be an option for Salal. And if Salal thinks it's an option, then the city has even more reason. Continue to pursue every avenue that it's discretion to try and reach a reasonable path forward in providing clean drinking water for its citizens and those it's responsible for. So onward, I will be supporting this and continuing to we work in good faith for the resolution that provides, again, you know, the most basic resource for the folks who live here and is fundamental to our quality of life. There you go. That's awesome. You announce Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question. I don't know who can answer it for me. So I don't know anyone in the, uh, the Salal board. But is there any engineer about some Salal operation? Are the board members, or is there anyone with water department knowledge based? Who, who is running what? I'd like to know more, some more information. Also, my concerns go right back to the E. coli outbreak that happened. I was on the phone to friends that I know that were living and are Salal users. I did everything I could to alert people because they did not know minutes. I was, I was there for them. I wonder if Salal would do that for their customers. That's, that's not allowable. I don't, not appreciating what is occurring right now. I think there's answers that we need to know. Fact, fact, uh, fact checking, well, whatever, fact checking. We have miscommunications all over the place for sure. But let's find some facts out. Let's be realistic. Uh, let's look ahead, see what's, what can come of this. Maybe nothing will come of it. We, we don't know, but yes, it's money. It's $12,000. It may be less. Hope it's less. Let's get the accuracy of information. Let's try at least and see where it goes from there. I'm, I'm willing to do that. For the people here.
Rosen.
Yeah. Been kicking around a while with this. Real brief. Feel that over time, this whole water issue has gotten muddied with and speaking from my position, I'm probably opposed to growth more than anybody on this council. Uh, I've made that clear. Under using, I feel that we're getting, a lot of folks are starting to use water as a tool to try to limit. I will say that I don't believe that is the correct tool to use. Water is a resource that we all say, you must have fresh, clean drinking water. It's also source of something that the city is supposed to provide to all its citizens. That is not the tool to use to attack growth. And as I said, I have issues with other ways to go at it. And as I said, I think some of the passion on this issue is down to growth. You can hear it in a lot of the comments right beneath the surface. I understand that frustration, share that frustration. I hope that we don't continue to use water as the tool to go after growth. It's not the right tool, I believe, to solve that issue. That's all, your honor.
Yeah.
So I am a Salal member. I'm the only one on the council that is. And I will say, I remember the E. coli outbreak and the two week water boil thing that we had to do. And it was terrible. And I remember Snoqualmie because Snoqualmie Tribe giving us water at UFC and Safeway. And I remember having to put a sticky note on my bathroom sink, not rinse my teeth, water getting. And then I remember when they did finally put the chlorine in the water, it was so strong. It smelled like a swimming pool. To this day, I have filters all over, have pictures in my refrigerators and my new refrigerator has a filter. And it kind of was very shocking. I had never been in a situation like that in my life. That's what I have to say about.
Let's go on. You announce anything, any, any comments, any more to add? I want to rush you. This is a passionate issue for the community as a whole, as well as you. Being none, motion before you is to approve AB 22-121 authorizing the mayor to sign a professional services agreement. Terra Property Analytics LLC, format content approved by the city attorney in an amount not to exceed $21,220. On favor?
Aye.
Be opposed? Motion carries and it is unanimous. Very much, council. With that, uh, that's the end of our regular agenda. We will move on to mayor, council and administrator concerns and initiatives. And where would we start today? Ms. Coleman? Mr. Elwood?
Thank you. Um, really sure how to position this. It's just more concerned that we need to have more debate on these topics. I mean, water, big deal. Way I'm seeing it is there's several different points of view on the Salal side that keep coming at us. One is growth, as you rose and pointed out. I think it's wrong and to use a catchphrase that's popular now to weaponize water as a means to stifle growth. There are some organizations that were founded specifically to stifle the development of the Dogron property. And they were using water to leverage that, ended up creating societies out of that. They, they protest water conservation in the same breath. They say, we need to preserve the water. It's troubling. And there are other folks that just don't want their rates increased. Those are things that are open for discussion. We don't even know what's going to happen. Any, any sort of future offer, partnership, or whatever that could be. We don't know what that is, but that's something that come to the table to talk about. So we need to continue to have these conversations and maybe it's more than just we send city staff to talk to Salal and Salal fires back emails or ignores the, the calls or whatever. We need to have more conversation. I mean, it's splitting the city in half, quite frankly. Um, so, so that's one concern that I have is that I feel like there's a lot of misinformation because there's agendas that are trying to be served. And it's, it's confusing the situation. Uh, so that one, uh, is there. School board. I'm still concerned with the school board. I feel like, and I keep saying it over and over again, we're being neglected. Don't know what other pressure we can apply, what other promises or guarantees we can get because we have none on them. But I would like citizens to step up and reach out to their school board. Appointees or Gary Francher, I think is one, our community here, reach out and start actually communicating more to that body to say, hey, look, this is a serious situation. I mean, we as a council, there are seven of us here and we continually try to fight for our community's wellbeing. We don't always agree, but we're up here trying to do what's right for the entire community, as Mr. Jocelyn says. That's our focus is the entire community. There's no civic singular agenda here. What we need are more community members to show up and speak out on these same issues. I understand that being an elected official, which is great. I can come up here and I can be the voice that I think the people want me to be. But we also need reinforcements from the people to help us get that message across. These two topics tonight are very sensitive to me personally, just because of all of the back and forth and all of the frustrations. I have friends live in, in Salal and I'm watching them go through problems. I've, my kids went through the school district and I could just go on and on about these two particular topics. There are other issues that this council faces and we try to deal with them head on. We try to deal with them as transparent as possible. We say what we think. We, we commit to the actions that, that you'll write and that make the most sense. We have our committees. We discuss this. We debate these things. That's what this body does. So, um, more participation from the community. I know it's a heavy ask because everybody's focused on what they need to do. But it sure would be great to hear a lot more positions, a lot more points of view on a lot of these key issues. Because we are up here trying to do the best that we can, make the best decision possible for all citizens. Not just the administration, not just one group of the community, but the entire community. I don't know if that's a concern or initiative. I just wanted to express that point. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, we're lucky to have this in the Valley Hospital, Public Health District number four, approximate to us. I recently got boosted. It couldn't have gone more swimmingly and straightforward. I would encourage folks consider doing that. I also spent a fair amount of time at the Swedish hospital this weekend because of a family member who's in fine health. Thank you. But the hospital is booked. The doctors are worried. They're looking at a fall that is just going to overwhelm the healthcare system yet again. And not because of COVID, because of pent up all the other stuff that didn't go around last year in this. Uh, so to continue to, uh, practice good health practice, uh, people as they move indoors. Let's each individually do what we can to minimize the man's place that are already stressed healthcare system. My thoughts? Thank you.
I would like to add, thank you, Mr. Jocelyn. Flu shots are available. Everybody should get them. They had a really big outbreak in Australia. Is where they found the strain for the flu. Shot across, but yeah, everybody's been wearing masks. Nobody's been getting sick. And this is the season of illness. Please get boosted. Please get a flu back.
Lundbeck?
Thank you, your honor. Yes, um, we're blessed to be here in North Bend. And one of the things that was pent up during the recent COVID outbreak was people being able to get out and socialize. And I'm happy to say that the Blues Walk went swimmingly well. And it was a lot of fun. The weather cooperated. There were a lot of people out having a lot of fun. And while caution is always recommended, Heather, uh, and Mark's admonitions are, are well founded. Uh, I think it's great that the people here in the community were able to get out, celebrate, support local businesses and hear some really great music. So congratulations to everybody who was involved with the Blues Walk. It was fantastic.
You, Ms. Miller?
Well, you're not stealing my thunder. The Blues Walk was fantastic as well. So I'll be brief on that. A wonderful night. I'm going to flip a little different direction. Um, I will be at the basic law enforcement graduation this Thursday. Heather Colan's going to, uh, join me there. We want to show our appreciation and our support. And if I could shake everybody's hand that day, that would be the best day for me.
shake everybody's hand that day, that would be the best day for me. So, uh, looking forward to that, and we'll let you know what it was like.
Ms. Miller, Mr. O' Tim.
Anything tonight, Your Honor, just want to say.
Right, very much. Um. Mr. Miller, anything for the administration?
Well, just to let everybody know, yes, the budget is coming. Got a budget workshop coming up. You could be receiving some materials. The staff has been spending a lot of time on it. I think you're going to get a, a really thorough briefing where this budget is adopted, so.
Uh, I've got a couple of small items here, uh, but important to the community, yard waste recycling event. Final one is, uh, October fifteenth. I assume that's a Saturday. Toughen my brain. Uh, secondly, um, Park Street Turn Lanes project did begin, uh, this Monday, actually, and so keep an eye out for that. Uh, maybe some rain closure at times, but they are being very careful around that. So wanted you to be aware of that. And, and, um, that's kind of it for, we're just items for the community on, on this night and listening to some of, um, council members here uh, and, and reflecting on um, some of what I've been thinking about, uh, a lot lately. I'll try and tie this all together, but it really comes down to community engagement. Rowan was asking for those who, who engage in their community in a positive way to make positive things happen and do good work for community as a whole. And, and I've, I've been thinking about that in terms of, of the context of those who I consider my mentors. And I arrived here in this community. Um, whether they intended to be or not, some of those who were um, and sadly, some of whom have passed in, in, in just this last year. Um, and I'm not going to get into a names kind of a thing, but, but just to say that I learned from them. That's why I'm of trying to do the best things we can for this community. I honor and respect all the council members who step up. All of the planning commission, the Economic Development Commission, the Parks Commission people, the recent salary, you know? Try to get some folks to, to serve on a salary commission when they know that that's a tough thing, politically charged. Um, they're engaged, folks that get engaged in in community forums, the folks who show up at Rotary, at Kiwanis, at Blues Walk, at at, uh, Downtown Block Party, innumerable events that go on and give of their time and of themselves be a positive force in the community. I think a lot about that. I think about the honor that they bring to us. And, um, and so the little bit of a segue there is to say that, uh, finally and early twenty twenty-three, we are going to launch, uh, the Citizens Academy. A long, a pet project of mine that, uh, I hope is going to attract um, a great class of folks who want to not only be engaged with their community, but to learn how uh, our work is, is done. Learn about what it is to have a public works department, what it is to have a police force, what it is to sit in a council seat or the mayor's seat or our staffers' seat. And, and all of the things that impact us. I think that's going to be a great way. I think we're going to be, get to have some of those conversations. Mr. Rosen was referencing that this, this dichotomy between, uh, growth and, 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 um, you know, water or any other it weapon, weaponizing a different topic, right? Uh, I understand that growth is a, is a concern in the community. Mr. Rosen and I have had many, many discussions around that over nearly two decades. Um, and, and I want that community that's out there, hopefully this hearing this to know, especially the Salal community. I do not take your concerns lightly. I do not, uh, dismiss that, uh, there is an economic um, concern that is legitimate where the membership know that, that you have concerns about your water. I see my responsibility to the community as again, as been so well spoken tonight. Be the best we can for all of the community, and that means not only every citizen who already receives water and every person outside of the city who already receives water. Those who have been promised water under state law, under county policy, under city responsibility. We have to provide that infrastructure for all, as Mr. Jocelyn has said. That is the fundamental job this council and mine is to provide for the infrastructure for the community. And so um, while we move through this process and while we try to get at um, the social media uh, weaponization that's going on, and there are many things out there that we consider inaccurate, you will be seeing more from the city and trying to clarify uh, information. We're also going to, uh, in these next few months, looking for opportunities to have some meetings, ultimately uh, culminating in probably a town hall, a and, and an event where we can both share uh, educational pieces as well as receive the feedback. So we certainly understand this is a huge, huge issue before the community as a whole. I appreciate that this council is so attentive to it and understands it and is willing to go through that process to do the best we can. Are too long. I've gone on, ended there. Um, we will be going into executive session to discuss property acquisition pursuant to R C W thirty-two dot thirty dot one one zero one E. There will be no action coming out of that meeting, and so the recording will stop at this time. You very much, everyone.